CUNY TV is transmitting the public sessions of this meeting live on the CUNY Board of Trustees website at www.cuny.edu/live. On February 10, 2025, the Board of Trustees convened the February 2025 Public Hearing regarding items on the calendar agenda for the February 18, 2025 Board of Trustees Meeting. Sixteen people registered to testify and fourteen people presented testimony in person. Two people submitted written testimony in person and one person submitted testimony electronically. Speakers included three adjunct professors and several students from the CUNY School of Law. Most of the testimony related to university's financial investments. Several speakers called for the full disclosure investments and divestment from Israel and entities that support Israeli interests. Additional speakers called in administration to stop the prosecution of charges against students and employees who participated in the April 2024 protests. Several speakers called in the university to protect students against recent executive As always, the testimony has been shared with the board and the chancellor as well as posted to the trustees' website. Trustees have been busy. Currently, the university is searching for three presidents. And I'd like to thank the trustees, we're sharing and serving on these search committees, for their time and energy to one of the most important tasks we have as trustees. The work on these searches is moving along and the full board looks forward to the next steps of appointing three new presidents. Trustees will also be participating on two central office searches, including the search for a new executive vice chancellor and university provost, and the vice chancellor for university advancement, as well as the upcoming search for CUNY Law School. Vice Chair Wilkin has been especially busy the last few weeks. Represented the Board of Trustees at Governor Hochul's State of the State last month, attended a meet and greet with the Kingsborough Community College Middle States Accreditation Team, attended with trustee Arvinides an event on AI hosted by NYCCT, and just this past weekend, attended caucus weekend in Albany. She was joined by trustee Arvinides, trustee Cortez Vasquez, and trustee Redden in Albany. Thank you all for being there and for representing CUNY. Chancellor, you're up next for a brief report.
Thank you, Chair Thompson. Good afternoon and welcome to all to our first meeting of 2025, days after we opened the spring semester last month. Classes were closed for the Lunar New Year, the first of our four religious and cultural holidays of servances that CUNY began marking this year, making us one of the first universities in the country to do so. Classes will also be closed for the Muslim holiday of Eid al-Fitr in March and in June for Eid al-Adha, and for the Hindu celebration of Diwali in the fall. This move was largely driven by our student trustee leaders and supported by this board and speaks to our commitment to welcoming students from all backgrounds. As we head into the spring 2025, we know that members of our community might be concerned about the changes in federal policies that impact immigrants, members of our LGBTQI-plus community, and recipients of federal research grants and others. As many of you are aware, the CUNY Office of Research and the Research Foundation of CUNY have been working hand in hand for the past, in the last few weeks, to make sense of the possible impact of recent federal executive orders in the growing research enterprise of CUNY, including one order that would have limited indirect cost funds from the National Institutes of Health Grants. Even with Judge Kelly's temporary restraining order on the 15% cap, the federal grant funding landscape remains most uncertain. This could be further aggravated by a potential government shutdown as early as March. Given all this uncertainty, I will be discussing with our presidents and deans and give them guidance at our next Council of Presidents' meeting. I want to thank Aref President Cordero Guzman, our interim provost, Alicia Alvaro, our vice provost, Wesson, and the CUNY Graduate Center President, Josh Bloomberg, for their incredible work in assisting principal investigators and providing guidance during this time. At the outset of the semester, I said that CUNY will support our students, faculty, and staff, the members of our community, to the fullest extent of the law. Above all, CUNY is an institution that welcomes, supports, and provides a safe environment for learning, teaching, and working, and we remain committed to supporting all of our diverse community members as they pursue their academic and career goals. Let me reiterate that. CUNY is deeply committed to protecting our undocumented and other non-citizen students and will adhere closely to guidance shared by state leaders. We will continue to support financial aid for undocumented and other immigrant students through our longstanding partnership with the Dream.us Scholarship Program. We have numerous programs to support undocumented students, including those over the Office of Undocumented and Immigrant Student Programs and those on individual campuses. CUNY community members and all New Yorkers can also find help at CUNY Citizenship Now, which has offered free confidential immigrant legal services for 30 years. CUNY is committed to supporting the diverse members of our LGBTQI-plus community. CUNY adheres to the New York State Human Rights Law, a broad and comprehensive anti-discrimination statute. We also have an LGBTQI-plus council, a CUNY-wide committee of faculty and staff dedicated to supporting our intersectional communities across the university system. This council has representatives on the campuses and students should feel free to reach out to them if they're seeking support on campus and beyond. As some of you likely know, last Friday, the Office of Civil Rights of the Federal Department of Education sent a letter to college and university presidents across the country providing notice of the department's new interpretations of the Supreme Court's 2023 ruling on admissions. We are assessing the implication of this guidance to our university. We will continue to review new policies and executive orders and gather information as it becomes available, but as our governor has urged us, we are not going to panic with every single action that comes out from Washington. Our focus is to continue to deliver on behalf of our CUNY students. The early part of the new year has been busy, and we've been laser focused on the important work of serving our students. I'm excited to report that the CUNY Transfer Initiative, a priority of this board, has been launched. Starting next fall, a majority of our students transferring anywhere within our system will be able to carry most of the credits in their major. It is expected to save them an average of 1,220 tuition costs that they would otherwise lose in paying for excess credits. We appreciate all the hard work from our faculty members, students, and staff who came together and did the hard work of creating our new transfer path. I commend interim provost Alicia Alvaro for helping lead this sizable undertaking. This work is testament to the interconnectedness of faculty and student success. We are also grateful to Governor Hochul and our state legislators for providing funding for this initiative. In another piece of good news, last week, we received affirmation of the strong impact of CUNY's research enterprise. The American Council of Education and the Carnegie Foundation renewed the Research One designation of the CUNY Graduate Center for its high research expenditure and doctorate production. In addition, City College was renewed as a Research Two, and for the first time, Hunter College has been added to the R2 category, cementing their positions in the highest ranks of the nation's public impact research universities. In addition, seven of our senior colleges received a newly created distinction as research colleges and universities, further reflecting the transformative growth in research we've had over the past 10 years. I want to convey my appreciation to Governor Hochul for a strong executive budget proposal for fiscal year 2026, which builds on her historic commitment to provide New Yorkers with a public higher education system that is affordable, modern, and innovative. I won't go into the details now because I'll be testifying on the executive budget in Albany next Tuesday, but I look forward to the CUNY's continued partnership with the governor and the Albany legislative leaders to make our sure vision of a more inclusive and prosperous New York a reality. Shifting gears, I want to say that I am pleased that 90% of the members of the Professional Staff Congress voted to ratify their union's new contract with CUNY. Their nearly five-year deal covers 30,000 full and part-time faculty and professional staff and brings CUNY entire unionized workforce on the collective bargaining agreements. I am grateful to our governor and mayor for their leadership and support, PSC President Davis and his team for engaging in the good faith negotiations that are so important to reach a conclusion, and the members of my leadership team for working so diligently throughout the entire process. With the collaboration with this board, we recently announced that we will centralize our policies relating to discrimination and harassment under the Center for Inclusivity and Equal Opportunity. This center will bring a system-wide approach to complaints, ensuring consistency in resolution and compliance with all laws, and will help strengthen the work we do to foster understanding and respect between diverse groups at CUNY. I am pleased to announce that Karim Pete, CUNY's Title IX Director, will serve as interim leader for the center while we conduct a national search for a permanent leader. I want to thank Vice Chancellor Sasha Owen for her leadership in the launch of the center. And now for some quick shout-outs. Congratulations to our Office of Diversity Services on the launch of CUNY Accommodate, a new platform that streamlines the process of requesting an academic accommodation. The system ensures that we are providing an inclusive supportive environment for every member of our disability community. Earlier this month, the application appeared open for CUNY's joint internship program with the MTA, which offers full-time paid summer internship opportunities for students across all campuses. This collaboration between the nation's largest urban public university and the nation's largest transportation network gives students work experience while supporting one of our city's most vital resources. The popular program received more than 34,000 applications for four 2024 internships for just 110 slots, double the number of applicants from the previous year. Since beginning the program in 2022, the MTA has hired 52 interns into full-time roles across all agencies, in addition to other interns who continue their experience through other MTA-sponsored internships. This year, CUNY had 30 students from nine colleges who have been awarded the prestigious Benjamin A. Gilman International Scholarship to study abroad. Congratulations to all 30 of them. As you know, I am proud to serve as the board chair of the American Council of Education, and last week I attended the ACE Experience in Washington, DC. I was honored to be part of this three-day event, which brought together leaders from diverse fields to discuss the pressing challenges facing higher education. I was pleased to see so many of my fellow presidents and provosts in attendance at the conference and lobbying members of Congress as part of the ACE Day in the Hill event. I had a fantastic time earlier this month at the Battle of Lexington, and I was not firing any muskets. That is the annual matchup of the men's and women's basketball teams of Hunter College and Baruch College. I performed the ceremonial tip-off and got to watch Baruch's Mia Castillo and Hunter's Alexa Charles, the top two scorers in D3 basketball. Congrats to the Hunter's women's team and to the Baruch teams on their wins, but truly everyone on the court played like a true champion. And, as the chair may reference his remarks, I'm just back from caucus weekend, and it was wonderful, and it was wonderful to see so many supporters of CUNY at the CUNY Caucus luncheon, including Governor Hochul, Attorney General James, Controller DiNapoli, City Controller Lander, Public Advocate Williams, Speaker Hieste, Majority Leader Stuart Cousins, Assemblywoman Solange and Walker, and our very own trustees, Wilkin, Arvaniades, Cortez Vasquez, and Redden, and many of our presidents and deans. We spoke about the importance of continuing to scale up our career success initiatives, including advising and interview opportunities to serve even more students. Finally, I'd like to share a brief update. The chair made reference to the three ongoing per se searches at Bronx Community College, Kingsborough Community College, and York College. We are in the final stages of the process, and I expect to be coming to the board in April with my recommendations. I want to thank the many board members who have been serving the three search committees for their time and commitment for this important work. And, to end, I'd like to share a short video about one of our true CUNY icons, a trailblazing composer and distinguished professor emerita, Tania Leon. In a career spanning more than 50 years, with 33 of them at CUNY, Professor Leon has received the highest accolade for her music, including a Pulitzer Prize, a Grammy Award, a Kennedy Center Honor, and a place in the American Academy of Arts and Sciences. And as we will see, she's a professor who's made a palpable impact on her students. Her generosity of heart is something which we can all aspire, and if we can see the video now.
My name is Tania Leon. I have taught at CUNY for 33 years. I taught composition. I conducted music with the ensembles and worked with the Dr. Antilles for their dissertations. I am right here as a pianist. I had no intention to even become a composer. The fact that I'm here is just destiny. A classmate of mine, she sort of approached me about going and replacing her Saturday in a school that she played in Harlem. I didn't know that that was changing my life completely, because the man that I was dealing with was orphaned, and that first class was the beginning of a project that had become the dance theater part of it. It was so impacting to see the dancers on stage, to hear the music. I was the pianist in the music. It did something to me, and that is when I said I better study composition. I think that I teach more, you know, allowing that your mind to actually connect with their inner zest, you know, their inner creativity.
What's that thing that Tania was able to put on your palette that perhaps wasn't there before?
So it's beyond music. It's the generosity of heart that I remember, and in the moments of doubt, I remember the love. My achievement is actually something that I share with the students, that I see them now in the world. They have become professionals. They are having concerts, representing the younger generation, contributing with their work for the music that is going to be discussed in the future. The students make us grow, and that is something that I realized that happened to me.
Generosity of heart, yes. Thank you all for being here. I look forward to seeing you when we meet again in April, and now back to you, Chair Thompson.
Thank you, Chancellor. We'll now move to items that require a vote. Item number one, the minutes of the regular board meeting executive session of December 16, 2024. I move item number one. May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the minutes? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. Item number two, Committee on Audit. Let me call on Committee on Audit Chair Angela Vivolo to present and move the following items.
Item 2A is a resolution to approve the fiscal year 2024 Uniform Guidance Report. Mr. Chairman, I present 2A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Item number three, Committee on Finance and Administration. Let me call on Committee on Finance and Administration Chair Henry Berger to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chair, through the efforts of the Committee on Efficiency, this is the shortest report I will have ever given to the board.
And we're all smiling because...
The Board Committee on Finance and Administration considered the following matters at its meeting on January 27, 2025, which I will now present to the board. Item 3A is a resolution to authorize an enterprise license agreement for VMware products following Broadcom Comms' acquisition of VMware. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3B is a resolution to authorize a contract with B&amp;H Photo Electronics Corp. for audio, video, and photography equipment. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3B for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3C is a resolution to authorize a contract with Outfront Media Inc. to place digital and print advertising in the New York City subway system. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3C for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 3C is approved.
Item 3D is a resolution to authorize a contract with WW Granger Inc. for maintenance, repair, and operating supplies. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3D for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 3D is approved.
Item 3E is a resolution to authorize terms of the Professional Staff Congress/CUNY collective bargaining agreement to apply to current employees and excluded titles. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3E for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 3F is a resolution to approve the Personnel Matters Report of the Finance and Administration Committee. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3F for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 3F is approved.
Items 3G through 3N are resolutions to appoint regular and interim members of the Executive Compensation Plan as follows. From the Central Office, Gladys Palma-Eshrona-Makers as interim senior university dean for graduate and undergraduate academic programming. Demetrius Cateas as interim associate vice chancellor for design, construction, and management. Michael Guy as university dean of academic programming. Laura Anderson as vice chancellor for career engagement and industry partnerships. At Baruch College, Suzanne Bronski is interim vice president for communications, marketing, and public affairs. And Michael Hughes is dean and chief librarian. Borough of Manhattan Community College, Liesel Jones as interim provost and senior vice president for academic affairs. And at Gutman Community College, Rosalyn Knight as vice president of strategy and chief of staff. Mr. Chairman, I present item 3G through 3N for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for these items? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Those items have been approved.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report.
Can't be. Thank you. Thank you, trustee. Item number four, the Committee on Education Policy. Let me call on Committee on Education Policy Vice Chair Henry Berger to present and move the following items.
The committee wasn't so efficient with this one. The Board Committee on Educational Policy considered the following matters at its meeting on January 27, 2025, which I will now present to the board. Item 4A1 is a resolution to establish an advanced certificate program in artificial intelligence for managers at Baruch College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4A2 is a resolution to establish a Bachelor of Arts in Black Studies at the City College of New York. Mr. Chairman, I present items 4A2 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? All those in favor? Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4A3 is a resolution to establish a Master of Arts in Instructional Design at the City College of New York. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A3 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4A4 is a resolution to establish a Master of Arts in International and Transcultural Education at the City College of New York. Mr. Chairman, I present items 4A4 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
Stay.
Okay, that item is approved with one abstention.
Item 4A5 is a resolution to establish a Bachelor of Arts in Jewish Studies at the City College of New York. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A5 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for the item? Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4A6 is a resolution to establish a doctoral program in neuroscience, leading to a doctoral philosophy degree at the Graduate School and University Center. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A6 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4A7 is a resolution to establish an advanced certificate in public scholarship at the Graduate School and University Center. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A7 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4A8 is a resolution to establish an Associate of Science degree program in behavioral science at the Stella and Charles Gutman Community College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A8 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's been approved.
Item 4A9 is a resolution to establish a Bachelor of Arts program in adolescent teacher education at Lehman College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A9 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4A10 is a resolution to establish an advanced certificate in media and information literacy and education at Lehman College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A10 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? Item 4A10 has been approved.
Item 4A11 is a resolution to establish a Bachelor of Science degree in bilingual early childhood and childhood education at Queens College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A11 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's been approved.
Item 4A12 is a resolution to establish an advanced certificate in disability advocacy at the CUNY School of Professional Studies. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A12 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 4A13 is a resolution to establish an advanced certificate in early childhood policy at the School of Professional Studies. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A13 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 4A14 is a resolution to establish an advanced certificate in children's program administrator credential at the School of Professional Studies. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A14 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 4A15 is a resolution to establish a Master of Arts program in early childhood policy and leadership at the School of Professional Studies. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4A15 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item's approved.
Item 4B1 is a resolution to close the Counseling Department and transfer its faculty to Department of Community Health and Wellness, excuse me, and the Department of Education and Language Acquisition from LaGuardia Community College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4B1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Sorry, second. Any discussion? Move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4B2 is a resolution to transfer the degree authority for programs at the CUNY School of Medicine to the Graduate School and University Center. at the CUNY School of Medicine to the Graduate School and University Center. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4B2 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item? Any discussion? We'll move to a vote. All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4C1 is a resolution to amend the Charter of Governance at Eugenia Maria de Ostos Community College. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4C1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? Move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4D1 is a resolution to appoint Michael Hughes with immediate tenure at Baruch College with a waiver by law 6.2. B. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4D1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second? Any discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4E1 is a resolution to approve the Faculty Personnel Matters Report of the Education Policy Committee. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4E1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second? Second. Any discussion on the item? All of those in favor? Aye. Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item 4F1 is a resolution to approve the Master Plan of the City University of New York. Mr. Chairman, I present item 4F1 for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All right. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Mr. Chairman, I am done.
You're not coming back a third time?
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Berger. Item number five, the Committee on Advancement and External Affairs. Let me call on Committee on Advancement and External Affairs Chair Beren Cortez-Vazquez to present and move the following items.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Board Committee on Advancement and External Affairs considered the following manners in its meeting on January 27, which I now present to the board. Item 5A is a resolution requesting the approval to name the James Laslow Endowment Fund for the Center for LGBTQ Studies at the Graduate Center. Perfect timing. Mr. Chairman, I present 5A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Thank you. Item 5B is a resolution requesting the approval to name the Sorel Chesen Research Award at Lehman College.
You're presenting item 5B. May I have a second for that?
Second.
Any discussion? Let's move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Thank you so much. Item 5C is a resolution requesting the approval of the incorporation of the CUNY School of Medicine Foundation. I present item 5C for the board's consideration.
May I have a second?
So happy about it.
May I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
That concludes our report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, trustee. Item number six, Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Let me call on Committee on Facilities Planning and Management Chair Brian Oberfeld to present and move the following items.
Mr. Chairman, the Board Committee on Facilities Planning and Management considered the following matters at its board meeting on January 27, 2025, which I will now present to the board. Item 6A is a resolution to authorize a lease renewal for Lehman College at 2501 Grand Concourse, Bronx, New York. Mr. Chairman, I present item 6A for the board's consideration.
May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I think that was my report. Item number seven is a resolution of appreciation for Dorian Gloria. May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved. The Chancellor has asked the board to consider four additional resolutions. I will ask the Secretary to read the resolutions for the record, and we will first vote to add the item and then take a vote on the item itself. Gail?
Item number eight is a resolution to authorize entering into a ground lease with the City of New York through an assignment of lease from the New York City Land Development Corporation as part of the Science Park and Research Campus, otherwise known as SPARC, and authorize a sublease agreement to the New York City School Construction Authority in the CUNY Building Ground Lease to the City University of New York as part of the SPARC project. Whereas on October 13, 2022, the City University of New York, the university, the state of New York, the state, the city of New York, the city, and New York City Economic Development Corporation, NYCEDC, agreed in form and substance to a non-binding memorandum of understanding between the university and the city regarding the joint development, funding, and planning of a Science Park and Research Campus, SPARC, at the Brookdale campus and for resolving certain other issues outstanding from the 2012 agreement, otherwise known as the Brookdale MOU. And whereas the Brookdale MOU provides in part that the university, the state, and the city will fund, develop, use, and maintain the Brookdale campus, and the university will be entitled to use approximately 510,000 gross square feet of built space on the Brookdale campus, the CUNY Development Program, with the city agreeing to fund any percent of the cost in the amount of approximately $473,900, the city funding, and the university contributing 50% of the cost in the amount of approximately $473,900, the state funding. And whereas by resolution dated January 22, 2024, the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York, the Board of Trustees, authorized the university to enter into a preliminary development agreement, now referred to as a Design, Demolition, and Construction Agreement, the DDC agreement, with NYCEDC to procure, oversee, and administer, one, the demolition of the existing Brookdale campus; two, the designing ground-up construction of a new building for the university located on a portion of the Brookdale campus, the building; and three, the designing ground-up construction of a public plaza area which will serve as the exterior main entrance to the new building. And whereas, in accordance with the Brookdale MOU as part of the Phase 1 of SPARC, the university and the city have negotiated the terms of a ground lease, the ground lease, between the city as lessor and the university as lessi assignee, covering a parcel of land at the Brookdale campus together with the building and improvements to be constructed thereon, in accordance with the terms of the DDC agreement and the plans to be developed thereunder, and in which approximately 410,000 gross square feet of built space for the CUNY Development Program will be located, which building in the aggregate will consist of approximately 570,000 gross square feet and up to 160,000 gross square feet, of which will be subleased from the university as sublessor to the New York City School Construction Authority as sublessi, pursuant to an agreement of sublease, the DOE sublease, for use as a high school by the New York City Department of Education for a term not longer than the term of the ground lease. And whereas the ground lease is to be for a term of 99 years, which will commence on substantial completion of construction of the building, the annual fixed rent will be $1. There are no real estate taxes or pilots due and payable by the university, and the university is responsible for the maintenance, repair, and operation of the building, and the cost, therefore, with the DOE sublease making the sublease thereunder responsible for its share of the same. And whereas to accommodate the city's disposition procedures, the city is groundlessor, and the New York City Land Development Corporation as groundlessi will first enter into the ground lease, and then concurrently, the New York City Land Development Corporation shall sign without recourse all of its rights, title, interest, and obligations under the ground lease to the university as a groundlessi, pursuant to the terms of an assignment of lease, the ground lease assignment, dated simultaneously therewith. And whereas, the ground lease, the ground lease assignment and the DOE sublease are subject to being on commercially reasonable terms acceptable to the university and acceptable for the purpose of securing the state funding. Excuse me. And whereas the ground lease and the ground lease assignment and the DOE sublease are subject to the approval of the New York State Office of the Attorney General and the New York State Office of the Controller now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes the Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel, or his designee, and that they hereby are and each of them hereby is authorized to execute, seal, and deliver the ground lease, the ground lease assignment, and the DOE sublease and such agreements, documents, and other instruments related thereto, and to take any and all such other actions as the Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel or his designee, so acting may deem necessary or appropriate, and that such signature by the Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel or his designee shall be conclusive evidence of his or her authority to perform all such acts and to assign and deliver all such agreements, documents, and instruments related thereto on behalf of the university. And be it further resolved that any subsequent material changes to the terms and conditions of the ground lease, the ground lease assignment, or the DOE sublease shall be submitted to the Board of Trustees for consideration and approval.
Oh, my God.
We've all the administrative.
Thank you so much. And I just, one correction. I think you had said 470-some-odd-thousand. It's 473 million, I believe. Oh, it's fine. But, that's fine.
That's right.
amended.
So amended.
As amended. Let me make a motion to add item eight to our agenda.
Second.
Item eight has been added. I now move item number eight. May I have a second for this item? Any discussion on the item? We will now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
Abstentions.
Okay. Item number eight is approved with one abstention.
Item number nine is a resolution to authorize a contract with Grand River Solutions to provide Title VI consultant services and system-wide policy review consultant services. Whereas, the City University of New York, the university, Center for Inclusivity and Equal Opportunity, the center, was established by the Board of Trustees, the City University of New York, the Board of Trustees, and the Chancellor of the City University of New York in June 2024 as part of the university's ongoing efforts to combat hate, discrimination, and harassment, as well as strengthen its work to foster understanding between diverse communities. And whereas, the center is responsible for compliance, development, training, and orientation related to university policy and matters of discrimination and harassment and ensuring consistency and standards for a complete resolution across the university's system related to the university's equal opportunity and nondiscrimination, discrimination policy, as well as Title VI, Title VII, and Title IX. And whereas, the retention of a qualified contractor delivering a team of skilled consultants that can provide impartial and thorough oversight, investigation, guidance, administration, implementation, coordination of strategic efforts, outreach, training, policy review, and procedures relating to the aforementioned responsibilities of the center, collectively known as the services, to supplement the current resources of both the center and the Office of General Counsel would allow the university, excuse me, to address issues of urgent or immediate concern in a timely, efficient, and cost-effective manner. And whereas, on December 30, 2024, the university issued a request for proposal, solicitation to identify a qualified contractor to provide the services that are beyond the current resources and capacities of the center and will be managed by the center. And whereas, the university received three responsive proposals to the RFP, which proposals were evaluated by a university committee. And whereas, the evaluation committee selected Grand River Solutions, Inc. as the highest-scoring responsive proposer to award a contract to provide the services. And whereas, the term of the contract will be for four months for an amount not to exceed $590,720, with the university reserving the right and option to renew the contract for an additional four-month term subject to appropriate authorization. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorizes the Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel, or his designee, and that they hereby are and each of them hereby is authorized to execute, seal, and deliver a contract for Grand River Solutions, Inc. to provide Title VI consultant services and system-wide policy review consultant services, permitting the university to make expenditures and purchases under said contract not to exceed $590,720 over a period of four months, with the university reserving the right and option to renew the contract for an additional four months, for an additional $590,720, together with any and all agreements, documents, and other instruments related thereto, and to take any and all such other actions as such officer so acting may deem necessary or appropriate, and that such execution by such duly authorized officer of the university shall be conclusive evidence of his authority to perform, sorry, all such acts and to execute and deliver all such documents and instruments on behalf of the university. And be it further resolved that any subsequent material changes to the terms and conditions of the aforementioned contract shall be submitted to the Board of Trustees for its consideration and approval.
I'd like to make a motion to add item number nine to our agenda. May I have a second?
Second.
Item nine is added. I'd like to move item number nine. May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion? We'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions? That item is approved.
Item number 10 is a resolution to authorize amendment of the City University of New York Policy on Sex-Based Misconduct, Policy 7.142, to reinstate the 2020 Policy on Sexual Misconduct as necessitated by the recent ruling by the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Kentucky and the recent Dear Colleague Letter issued by the United States Department of Education. Whereas, the City University of New York, the university is committed to creating and maintaining a safe environment for university students, faculty, administrators, staff, and visitors so they can learn, work, and participate in education programs and activities free from sexual harassment and other forms of sex-based discrimination, including discrimination based on LGBTQ plus status. And whereas, the university, the current university policy on Sex-Based Misconduct, Policy 7.142, was adopted by the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York, York, the Board of Trustees, on July twenty third, twenty twenty four. And whereas on January ninth, twenty twenty five, the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Kentucky issued a ruling vacating the twenty twenty four Title IX final rule. And whereas on January thirty first, twenty twenty five, the United States Department of Education issued a Dear Colleague Letter effective immediately, the United States Department of Education's E D Office for Civil Rights, O C R, will enforce Title IX under the provision of the twenty twenty Title IX rule, rather than the recently invalidated twenty twenty four Title IX rule. And whereas the United States Department of Education issued that certain Dear Colleague Letter six days into the start of the university's spring term. And whereas the twenty twenty policy on sexual misconduct prohibits dating violence, domestic violence, sexual assault, sexual harassment, stalking, voyeurism, retaliation, unwelcome verbal or physical conduct based on a community member's sex, including LGBTQ plus status, and all other categories of prohibited conduct contained in the policy on sex-based misconduct. And whereas the university is determined that it is in the best interest of the university to reinstate the policy that immediately preceded the policy on sex-based misconduct, i.e., the twenty twenty policy on sexual misconduct, subject to such additional changes and amendments, which are consistent with the laws and regulations of the state of New York and the university's mission to all as set forth in the attached policy on sexual misconduct, which will then be compliant with federal law. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees authorizes reinstatement of the twenty twenty policy on sexual misconduct adopted by the Board of Trustees on August fourteenth, twenty twenty, and the policy on sexual misconduct revision to provision not permitting reliance on statements, not subject to cross-examination in Title IX hearings, as is necessitated by the recent Dear Colleague Letter from the United States Department of Education and the ruling by the United States District Court for the Eastern District of Kentucky, and that they be hereby reinstated effective Tuesday, February eighteenth, twenty twenty five, together with such other changes as would be consistent with the laws and regulations of the state of New York and the university's mission, and be it further resolved that the adopted twenty twenty policy on sexual misconduct be and hereby is reinstated and amends and replaces the current policy seven point one four two in the university's Manual of General Policy as set forth in this resolution.
I'd like to make a motion to add item eleven to our, no, I'm sorry, that's item ten? Item ten to our agenda.
Second.
All right. That item has been added. I'd like to move item number ten. May I have a second for the item? Any discussion on the item? All right, we'll now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed abstentions? That item's approved. Our last add.
Item number eleven is a resolution to authorize contract, contractor contracts for outside counsel legal services. Whereas the City University of New York, the university's Office of the Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and General Counsel, the Office of the General Counsel, is the university's system-wide resource for legal advice and representation. And whereas the Office of the General Counsel, in addition to serving as counsel to the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York, the Board of Trustees, is the principal office for legal affairs and ethics for the university system, and oversees the provision of legal services for the university and each constituent school and college. And whereas the Office of General Counsel also specifically provides strategic pre-litigation legal and employment counsel, transaction and regulatory counsel, and policy advice to the university and its constituent schools and colleges. Whereas the Office of the General Counsel has a wide range of expertise required to enable it to counsel and advise the university in fulfilling its institutional mission, there are subject matter areas of law, compliance, and regulation that are beyond the scope and capacity of the office. And whereas the retention of one or more general full-service law firms possessing the subject matter expertise not otherwise within the scope or capacity of the Office of General Counsel that can serve as outside counsel when reasonably necessary and appropriate would alleviate the challenges presented by the lengthy public procurement process and the emergency ad hoc protocols often used to secure outside counsel, and would allow the university to address issues of urgent or immediate concern in a timely, efficient, and cost-effective manner. And whereas the university's retention of one or more general full-service law firms is not intended to circumvent the jurisdiction or obligations of the New York State Office of the Attorney General or, excuse me, the New York City Law Department, as the case may be, to represent the university's respective schools and colleges. And whereas the university desires to perform a request for proposal, R F P solicitation, to identify qualified general full-service law firms to provide both emergency pre-litigation support and general legal counsel in subject matter areas outside scope, capacity, and expertise of the Office of General Counsel. And whereas the law firms submitting the proposal, responding to the R F P, will each be expected to execute a retainer and engagement letter with a term not to exceed two years, and which firms shall offer the best value to the university that will permit the expenditure of attorney's fees and expenses not to exceed a total aggregate amount of two million dollars. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York authorizes the General Counsel to enter into one or more contracts with law firms selected through the R F P solicitation process for an amount not to exceed two million dollars, and which contracts shall have a term not to exceed two years from the date of such contract to provide outside legal services to the university under the supervision of the Office of the Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs and the General Counsel when reasonably necessary and appropriate in accordance with the university protocols for the engagement of outside counsel, and that the General Counsel or his designee be and thereby hereby are authorized to negotiate, execute, seal, and deliver such contracts and/or engagement letters, and that such execution by such duly authorized officer of the university shall be conclusive evidence of his authority to perform all such acts and to execute and deliver all such contracts, agreements, documents, and instruments contemplated thereby on behalf of the university. And be it further resolved that any material changes to the terms and conditions of the contracts, agreements, documents, and other instruments hereby approved by the Board of Trustees shall be submitted to the university's Board of Trustees for its consideration and
I'd like to make a motion to add item number eleven to our agenda. May I have a second? All right. Item eleven has been added. I'd like to move item number eleven. May I have a second? Any discussion on the item?
Just a clarification. And you might have said it and I got lost, that it's in aggregate two million dollars, it's not eight, not one contract of two million, right? So I just want to make sure that that we say. If so, then.
Any other discussion on the item? All right, let's now move to a vote. All of those in favor? Any opposed abstentions? That item is approved. Thank you so much. Before we adjourn, and with one abstention. Thank you. Before we adjourn, and the Chancellor has a couple of words he'd like to say.
Just, you guys moved too quickly for me when you did the resolution of appreciation for Dorian, and just wanted to thank her for five years of service. You might not remember that Dorian joined us in the H R space right before the pandemic began, right? And I think few items of the university's work was more challenging in terms of how do we keep our people safe as we continue the work of the university during the pandemic. And, you know, Dorian was clearly instrumental in shaping our policies that helped us think about going remote, coming back, all the, all the, all the things that I don't want to have the board revive all the decisions that we have to make, but want to appreciate her role. She also sat on the negotiation table with the C thirty seven and the P S C, working in those contracts, which, as you know, we're all happy when we get to sign at the end, but getting the sausage done takes a lot of, a lot of work. So want to thank Dorian for all her work. She was a great advocate for the entire H R team, and we wish her well on her retirement. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chancellor. There being no further business, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn. Do I have a second? We are adjourned. Thank you all so much, and thank you, Gail.